We follow the Metropolis City Council's order. Call the roll, please.
Barfield, Canada, Carol, Hall, McGuire, McManus, Mydell, and Short.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then stand and pray.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America. A true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the blessings that you've given each and every one here. Be with this council, dear Heavenly Father, that each decision that we make will be for the betterment of the community. Be with the ones, dear Heavenly Father, that have health issues. Not only be with the sick, dear Heavenly Father, but we even with the caregivers. Be with the ones in our community, dear Heavenly Father, that have lost loved ones. Be with the sick. Be with our armed service personnel on foreign grounds, but here in the United States, guide and direct their lives, bring them safely home to their families. Ask in thy precious name, amen. The motion to approve the minutes of the 4:11:16 meeting. Motion by Mr. Hall. Second by Mr. McManus. Call the roll, please.
Barfield, Canada, Carol, Hall, McGuire, McManus, Mydell, and Short.
Yes.
Thank you.
First item, citizens' request, Mr. Henley.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I'm here this evening with my wife, Leanne, and we're here mainly to give a heartfelt thank you to each and every member of the council. We have done a lot of hard work on a building that you were kind enough to put in our hands back in November, and shortly after that, you afforded us a loan that has allowed us to refurbish, remodel, upgrade the building into a wonderful status that it is. After a lot of due diligence by Leanne and myself and some wonderful caring contractors, we're gonna come in and budget, believe it or not, and on time of our self-imposed deadline, which is May 7th, which certainly coincides with the spring playing uptown. There'll be a lot of traffic that day. Of course, there'll be a lot of vendors set up on the streets. We'll get a lot of traffic from that, and we just felt that was an excellent time to showcase what we had to offer. So, we did want to be here this evening and show you that we appreciate what y'all done for us. You know, that uptown area is growing by leaps and bounds if you've been up through there. We've got a lot of new businesses, a lot of businesses remodeling, moving, expanding. It's just phenomenal. Now, I know the city of Metropolis is, there's a lot of new businesses in the city. I don't want to take that away from anybody. It's wonderful to see it, and we're glad to be part of it. And we wanted to invite all of you to come up there, especially May 7th. We may make it open a day or two earlier, but May 7th will be the day that we will get open. We invite you, your family, your friends, everybody to come by and see basically what you've done. You gave us opportunity. We were just the hands that toiled to get it there. So, again, I appreciate everything you've done for us. We look forward to being part of the community, the business community of Metropolis, and watching it grow. You know, it's phenomenal over the last few months to a year how much has went on in this town, and we're extremely proud to be part of it. You know, everybody, it's City Mayor, Rick, Jan, Danil, everyone has went out of their way to make this heaven for us. Excuse me, but this is very emotional for me, and I wanted to thank you. I want, I wish everyone that you help would come up here and express how they feel and how much it means to them for y'all to be part of it, because without it, it couldn't have happened. This would've just been another dream that there's no way it would've took place, but y'all made it happen for us. We're very proud of that. We're very proud of our community, our city, and we wanted to express that to all of you.
Mr. Henley, we, as a city government, we should be the one thanking you and Leanne. You took a building that we've struggled with for several years. We took it on good faith and then realized that, you know, we took something that probably wasn't a real good idea, and you have taken a building that was a true eyesore in the uptown district. And you have made a showcase out of that building. And I've kinda tried to drop in or look through the front door and stuff like that and saw the progress and the sweat and the hard work that you all have put into it. Yeah, we furnished a little bit of money, a little bit of equity, and a little bit of lighting, things like that. But you are the ones to be, should be, really commended for your effort and what you're gonna bring into the uptown district. You are going to be a true uptown district business that everybody can be proud of. So, I want to thank you all, you know, you've done a lot more than we've done.
Well, thank you very much for that. That is very kind. It all rolls together, you know.
I agree.
If we, we all step up and we do our part, you know, our community benefits from it. And, you know, again, after many years of struggling, I think we've turned a corner in this town, and we're gonna start moving forward in leaps and bounds. And, you know, in many different aspects, you know, everything from business to tourism to, you know, to putting money in the city coffers as well as our coffers. And that was our whole goal, you know. We're proud of our city, and we never even entertained the thought of going anywhere else. We wanted to be here, and we think we've put our roots down. We've lived here many years, we've sank some roots down here now, you know, for the rest of our lives. And we just wanted to step in here and thank y'all very heartfeltly for being part of it for us. I know a lot of times you do a lot of things and you can't see the results. We would encourage you to come see our results. We're very proud of what we've been able to accomplish.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Very nice of you. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Even as we speak right now, there's three new storefronts up there that actually have construction going on at one time. And finally, you know, we may have kinda hit a little medium niche up there of something that is proactive and something that does have a drawing ability to the public and stuff like that. So, we know the Henleys are proud, and we're proud of you.
We're good.
We're happy for you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Ms. Diana.
Hi, I'm Diana Hitchcock, and I'm new to the community. However, I've noticed in the short period of time that I've been here, I love this little town, but I'm not crazy about all the little critters we have running loose. The dogs and the cats stray are abundant in this town. So, could you just share with me what the policy is on that? Because it seems like the same pets are out running loose.
I can address that.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
I don't think we have a bad dog problem now. Now, I'm not saying there's not an isolated dog loose and stuff like that, but the policy is, is every dog that's loose, should not be loose, it should be on a leash. Now, and we are well aware that Ms. Jones down the street knows that our dog catcher comes to work at 7:00 in the morning, and he goes home at 3:30 or 4:00 in the afternoon, so they come in from work and they turn their dog loose. We deal with that the best we can. We actually switch the dog catcher around a little bit in the summertime mostly, where he comes in maybe at 10 o'clock in the morning and works into the evening trying to take care of that problem, you know, and it is a problem. Cats is a great problem, you know.
I don't have any, but I have anywhere from 10 to 11 in my yard on a regular basis.
And neither do I. I don't have any also. But, one of the main problems with the cats is the people that either own them or, they may not own them, but they're feeding them, and they don't neuter or spay them. And then when you get to the other critters, the undomesticated critters that, you know, go along with that is in the city of Metropolis with the cat population and the feeding of the cat population, the coons, the opossums, the skunks has a buffet every night. You know, people leave their cat food and stuff out for their cats. And then the unwanted, you know, non-domesticated animals actually know that, and there's not much you can do with those.
Right. I guess my concern more so is school's gonna be getting out here soon, and there's children out there, and during the day, the stray dogs are out there. And the dogs, as opposed to the cats, are more of a threat to children. And children are running around, it's human instinct for dogs to run after children or people that are moving.
Sure, I understand.
And I'm also finding that it's the same dog that belongs to the same people. And I don't want to say it's just isolated, I just want to know when I, your animal control department is wonderful. I don't know his name, and I apologize for not knowing his name, but he's very wonderful. However, I never know if he gets the dog, if someone gets hurt, or if it's, he really does go out and look for them, and I know he does, but I never get a call back. So, is there any way that the dog catcher could call back?
But you don't call the dog catcher though, do you?
Oh, I call the dog catcher.
You call him on his cellphone?
Well, I don't know if it's his cellphone, but I call the dog catcher when there's loose animals.
All you've got to do is, I mean, if you've got that number, that's fine.
He hears from me on a frequent basis.
He should investigate every time there's a loose dog.
He does. He's wonderful.
Now, we do catch them, I mean, we do impound them.
Well, many times we know whose dog it is because by word of mouth, we know whose dog it is. However, how many times do these people have to be notified that their dog's on the loose before we enforce something with these people?
Well, without telling you something that we don't know, if they're just turning them out, once or twice should be enough, then they should be getting a ticket.
A ticket. And who issues that ticket, the dog catcher?
John has the ability to write a ticket.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I'm fairly new to the community, and the dog catcher does a wonderful job, so I'm not pretty sure.
Well, after he is called two or three times on the same dog, if they continue that, that dog should be taken.
Okay.
They're not gonna, and we have a, I'm proud to say, we have a very good dog pound, very modern, and they do a good job with it. Unfortunately, it's a kill facility, I mean, if they stay there for pretty long.
Well, you can only keep so many, and I understand.
Well, fortunately, we euthanize very few animals. We have some contacts in the northern part of Illinois and bordering states that don't have enough adoptable dogs. And we actually make a trip, at least once every few weeks, we meet a group up around Mount Vernon and exchange dogs. They take them back north for adoption and stuff like that, so that keeps us from having to put the dogs down. That's good.
So, pretty much after the same homeowner's been notified a couple times, there should be a ticket issued to some extent?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay, so the homeowner knows we're serious.
Well, let's go one step forward from that.
Okay.
You call me.
Okay.
And feel free to.
Okay.
You know, I'll give you a card. It's got my cellphone number, it's got the office number and everything like that, and I'll help expedite that process and stuff like that, and I'll talk to John.
Well, he's been very gracious, and he's very good at his job. It's just, I'm not understanding why the same dog and the same people are still out there roaming, and...
I can answer that for you. I mean, I wish I could, but I promise you, in the morning, I will get that answer for you, why that same dog. Mr. Abel can answer it.
I can answer it tonight.
A lawyer got the answer.
Well, for Mr. Roman, the dog catcher, to issue a citation, normally he has to see the violation. So, if he doesn't see the dog, he comes out in Huntsville and he doesn't see it, he, now, on the other hand, he could issue a ticket, and I'll, and the mayor and I will talk to him about this. If you're willing to sign a statement, a complaint, okay, he could go issue that ticket based on your complaint, okay? That, hey, I saw the dog, it was, describe the dog, red and white, black and yellow, whatever, purple dog, whatever. You describe the dog, size the dog, where you saw it, the time of day that you saw this dog, and it wasn't under a leash or anything like that, and then, and you know whose dog it was, then he could go based on your complaint and issue a ticket, okay? And he may not have explained that to you, and we probably should explain that to you, but if you're willing to help us in that regard, we can get a ticket issued. If he, it's just that normally, when you call the dog catcher, if he doesn't find the dog or actually see the dog running at large, then he can't, he needs somebody else to help him.
Well, I know he's explained to me on a previous occasion that we can't tag a dog vicious until after they've bit someone.
That makes a lot of sense.
Unfortunately, that's true. That's a state law, okay? And he's, we're all handicapped about that, unfortunately. We can, we can, we can, there's a thing called a dangerous dog, which is less than a vicious dog, but we have to have at least two or more occasions where the dog has threatened somebody, okay? And then, and of course, we have to have witnesses to that. And of course, and that's not something the city can prosecute. That has to go through the state's attorney's office to handle either a vicious or a dangerous dog determination. It has to go through there by state law. And I'd be glad to sit down with you and also take time, when the mayor does, to go through all of these things with you and see if you can help us too.
Okay, well, the city clerk has my name and phone number, and so if you could make time to discuss this matter with me, I'd greatly appreciate it. Because school is letting out, children are out there, and to say that a dog has to bite you twice before it can tag vicious, which is the state law, how would we feel if that's our children or our grandchildren? And so, I think that's an issue we need to make a little more. I know the newspaper is great at putting policies into effect and asking people to keep it on a leash. However, I don't think they know the severity of it if one of our children or grandchildren get hurt by a stray dog, let alone an adult, that there's a lot of seniors out there walking for fresh air and exercise. And so, I want to take this time to say thank you, but I think we need to make sure that the community knows the severity of it. It's not just whether your dog nips somebody on the ankle, it's somebody that could really get hurt, and nothing's really been addressed. And maybe we need to put something more severely in the paper saying what the repercussions could be by, home insurance could go up, your dog could be euthanized, and there's more than just saying, oh, my dog bit the neighbor kid. And so, I think they just need to be made more aware of that. And my only other concern, I'm sorry that I'm just really new, and I'm really learning the city here. And I really love this little town and the people in it. And so, I'm trying to learn all the ways, and I've done a couple things wrong, can't be wrong, 'cause I've learned the hard way a couple things. And then, I had a friend that bought a place over on East 7th Street. That was a mobile home, and they said that they were, I know there's a new ordinance about the land size if you're gonna have a mobile home. I'm not sure exactly what the details are, and I apologize for coming here unprepared. However, they said they were gonna put like a camper on it while they were getting it fixed up, and somebody told them they couldn't do that, and I go, well, I find that hard to believe because we're putting up like down on their 19th Street or 20th Street, small buildings, they're like sheds, and they're making those houses. And I know a camper that's on the east side of town that nobody lives in, but it's parked there, and it's just a camper. Is this still in the making, still in the works, nothing cut and dried, or am I just not informed well about this?
Well, we do have ordinance against trailers in certain areas in the city of Metropolis.
Okay, kind of help me out. Are we talking inside the city limits or outside the city?
There's districts, actually certain sections in the Metropolis that you can have a mobile home. And then there's certain districts that you can have a mobile home.
Okay. I don't know, sorry.
I mean, it wouldn't be fair if you live in Highland, NOLA, to go out there and put a camping trailer to live in.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd much rather deal with you today than I had Highland, NOLA tomorrow, and we start letting camping trailers move in out there.
Yeah, I wouldn't be very happy with that myself.
And, in the case where...
But I just live in a little cottage, so...
Okay, but, and then on the other hand, yeah, and we have ordinance meetings, you know, that put, and that's really made, for what you're talking about tonight, I invite you to an ordinance meeting.
Okay.
And you, and you can just...
I'll check back on that. I'm just trying to learn this city.
Well, really, this is not the place to learn that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll do that.
But we have plenty of time at them ordinances meetings.
Okay.
You're more than welcome. If you want to please be put on the agenda, Ms. Jan will just tell you on the phone, or we'll send you a notice. We have an ordinance book. I'll even make you a great big old copy of that, and you can just read your heart out. But there is areas there you can have them. There's areas you can't have them. There's areas that if you move them out, they can't go back.
Okay.
There's areas, they have to, maybe there's a 10-foot trailer sitting there now. It's been there for 40 years. It's not gonna go back in there.
Okay.
Even if it's allowed in that district, it's gotta be at least 16-foot wide to modernize and stuff like that. But anyway, that's, that's the way it is.
All right, so there are places in town where you can just...
There's not places in town where you can live in a camping trailer, no, ma'am. Not in a camping trailer.
How about, I'll go to one of those ordinance meetings, and that'll probably be better for me, and I won't be wasting your time.
That's Mr. Short's ordinance. Give me just happy to address it.
I know some of those little sheds with power in down on, what is it, 19th or 20th Street? But yet you're saying they need a 16-foot trailer when that shed...
Well, we're not gonna address that tonight. You know, that's for a different day, for a different day.
We'll do it.
Probably not gonna change that ordinance, but anyway.
Okay. Thank you all for your time, and I'm looking forward to learning all the right things in the rest of it.
I could just hardly wait.
Sorry, but thank you.
My name's Gary Summer.
Yes, sir.
Diana Postletham-Sowell is my supervisor at the post office for animal concerns, aliens, for rest of city carries.
Yes, and I understand.
Okay.
Yeah. And if I was a postmaster or a postman, I'd really be concerned about it.
And they do, they do, they try to look out.
But all we have to do, I mean, the post office knows if we have any complaint on a vicious type dog or one that chases somebody or whatever, we try to address it immediately. We still have a letter of the law that we have to abide by. You don't get it prosecuted and stuff like that, but I promise you, we'll work as closely as we can. Not a problem. And we want to. All right. And I don't, I thank everybody else out there, it was all family and work, so we'll just move right on. And thank you all very much. Mayor's report. First item, motion to adopt proclamation for the Southern Illinois Communities for Stronger Economic Together. Motion by Mr. McManus. Second by Mr. Hall. Call the roll, please.
Barfield, Canada, Carol, Hall, McGuire, McManus, Mydell, and Short. Thank you.
Next item will not require a motion. It's just an acknowledgement, recognizing Dr. Fred White's resignation after serving 25 years on the police pension board. Fred has been a very strong leader, has been chair on that committee several years, has done a tremendous job for our pension board. Chuck sits on that board, and Fred will actually, I mean, it'll be hard to replace Fred on that board. So, especially as a, an outside citizen that doesn't, you know, he's just a common everyday citizen that took an interest in that, and we want to thank him for his services. He has. And I will just wait for a recommendation from, to replace him. Next item, corporate counsel report, Mr. Abel.
Your honor.
Your honor.
Diana's got your press.
You know, he's got a promotion.
Outside of court, I've only understood it one time, and that's in a prayer.
You can pray for me, too.
It was to you.
The, no, I started, I want to say, I really don't have anything, I'll have a closed session out of, but I don't have anything.
We need to stop the camera.
I kinda needed that. Put that in the paper, too.
There'll be a bonus for you.
Next item, Greater Metropolis Convention and Visitors Bureau.
How you gonna top that?
I'm just kinda, God, I'm, I'm like Rick, I don't have much to say. You guys have seen more than me than probably what you care in the last couple of meetings. I don't plan on being here much, and I'm just here because it's time for, actually, it's past time for our last draw. We've been able to make our quarterly money last a little bit longer than what we've anticipated. So, just wanted to give you guys an update. And it's not all archery related like it has been in the past, but since I came back in November, just wanted to give you an update of what's been going on. We've fulfilled over 200 information requests, so that's come in through the website and different places. We've sent things out. We're finalizing the new website design, should be active and live here in the next two weeks, and it looks amazing. We've gained almost 3,600 likes on our Facebook page, established a Twitter account with over 300 followers. I've attended Governor's Conference where we made some really good connections and relationships, which did help us in securing that archery tournament this year. We've been able to refocus and reevaluate where some of the advertising money was spent, especially for Superman Celebration, some of the other events, and really refocusing it to gain more true tourists, which are outside that 100-mile radius that are gonna spend the night in the hotels. And if you guys haven't been on our Facebook page, Greater Metropolis Convention and Visitors Bureau Facebook page or Superman Celebration Facebook page, go on there. I did an interview with Fox Two Detroit, so we got two minutes full of free press in the Detroit area just talking about Metropolis and the Superman Celebration, but check that out. You know, we secured the archery tournament, and we're focusing in on our hotels, trying to help them out and raise their standards up a little bit so that our guests are blown away when they get to town. So, it's time for our last draw of the budget, which is the 120, 608. And pretty much every dime of that is going to go, because we like to go out with a bang, I guess. We go to Superman Celebration, they requested 8,000 this year for their entertainment. We've added the third tournament in with the archery event, so that, the cost of that's gonna be about $50,000. And then we also cover a portion of the expense for the fireworks on the Fourth of July with Harris. So, that pretty much will take care of that money right there. But just wanted to let you guys know that probably after this, the next time you'll see me, I'll have a whole new marketing plan for the next fiscal year, and we ask you for more. So, you all are like my husband, that's all I ask for, so...
We have a motion, we have a second.
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Barfield, Canada, Carol, Hall, McGuire, McManus, Mydell, and Short.
Next item on the agenda, parking reservation, Mr. Carroll, sir.
Yes, Mayor, I have one motion to make. And before I make that motion, I'd like to say to the visitors and the council, we have a very nice old pool and a very nice new bath house. And we're going to staff it and have it ready for the summer, and hopefully our kids and our business... And hopefully our kids and our visitors will enjoy it. And I'll make the motion to accept the hiring of the two thousand sixteen city pool as presented.
And we have our, a very young pool manager.
I was gonna tap me on to the old part, so I'm gonna thank you.
I was wondering where we were gonna go here.
We'd be part of that, proud of that old part of having a state of Illinois that's got the qualification.
That's true.
True, that's right.
We do have a motion, we do have a second. Call or roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
McMahon? Mazzell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's a good spark to recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. On the, uh, next motion, we do have a motion to suspend the rules and place an ordinance for a special use permit on twenty-one oh one, the property screen showing this passage. Did you get that ready?
It's in your package. Uh, I was hoping maybe he would appear tonight.
I thought he would might do.
And frankly, he's never responded to the questions that we posed or the other information.
That'll be not good.
So I would recommend we table this until we get all our questions answered. Uh, I talked to Chad about this today. We put it on, he put it on in anticipation that we might have that information or that, uh, Mr. Harris might be here. But since he's not, and he's, he told Chad today that he's been real busy with some other stuff. I, my point is, I think CS grant is not. It says it wouldn't be issued until he actually acquires the property. I understand that. But if we were to grant it tonight with the ordinance, then, and he didn't go through with it, I feel like we need to come back and adopt the new ordinance that we're sending that. And rather than just do all that hassle, let's just wait and get it done.
Not know the specifics of the project.
I'll make the motion again.
I'll say.
Motion to the table. I'd feel more comfortable on that. Okay, and I'll make a new rule if I care. And Mr. McManus made that motion, Mr. Hall, Short. Second item. Call or roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
McMahon? Mazzell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have no need for the second part of that. Moving on, Waterlight Street, Mr. Barfield, sir.
Yes, sir, mayor. This is from our April, uh, twenty-second meeting. These items were discussed in detail and all approved agreement for the full council. I will make the motion of the following. I'll make a motion to accept a payment number two for the intercepted manual rehabilitation project in amount of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars to be used silver.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield and second by Mr. McManus. Discussion. Call or roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
McMahon? Mazzell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, I'll make the motion to accept change order number two for a intercepted manual rehabilitation project in amount of nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars to be used silver.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield and second by Mr. McManus. Call or roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
McMahon? Mazzell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make the motion to accept the task order for the wastewater treatment plant, phosphor study as required by ADEPA NPD's permit.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield and second by Mr. McManus. Discussion. Call or roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
McMahon? Mazzell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
Thank you.
When you to adopt a resolution to use water fuel tax funds for the twister improvement project.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield and second by Mr. McManus. Call or roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
McMahon? Mazzell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to accept the purchase of a thirty-two bit computer for a scaling system at the water treatment plant for Kipper Technology in amount of two thousand, four dollars and eighty-one cents.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield and second by Mr. McManus. Call or roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
McMahon? Mazzell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to accept the purchase of three firewalls for the computers at the water treatment plant, wastewater plant, and that being zoning department for Kipper Technology in amount of two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield and second by Mr. McManus. Call or roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
McMahon? Mazzell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to accept the purchase of two lawn mowers for the street park in amount of eight thousand, three hundred dollars from Little Tractor.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield and second by Mr. McManus. Call or roll, please.
This is, uh, riding mowers, I hope.
I hope so, too. I hope they both got motors on.
Put a push mower here.
Looking at lawn mowers, I'm thinking of.
Well, I'd hate to see that eight thousand dollar lawn mower. You know, if you had to push it anyway. Yes, they are grasshopper, sixty-one inch cut with Cobra engines. Uh, two of them.
What color are they?
Well, they're kinda gray with, with, uh, brown letters on them.
That's just what I want.
Yeah.
Got big cow.
They do have big cow, little grasshopper. Y'all been up here too long. Something going on.
Wound up.
Have you been in these happy fields or what?
Oh, there's a brown.
All right, we do have a motion and we do have a second. Call or roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
McMahon? Mazzell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to accept the purchase of a bush hog tractor for Public Works from Little Tractor in amount of thirty thousand, two hundred dollars. Let negotiations win you on on this one.
We worked on that for about a month. We do have a motion by Mr. Barfield and second by Mr. McManus. Discussion. Call or roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
McMahon? Mazzell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, the last one, I will make a motion to accept the purchase of street glass with E-two, C-two grant funds in amount of nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
I do want to thank, uh, Mr. Barrett and Mr. Abel for their, uh, hard work on that, trying to figure out what we had, what we needed to get. And, uh, Waterlight Street for, uh, understanding that we need to upgrade those lights. So it is money well spent. We do have a motion, we do have a second. Call or roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Excuse me, Canada?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
McMahon? Mazzell?
Yes.
And Short?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, the commission report.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield. I think that Waterlight Street, uh, we've had a lot going on and things like that. We will be having, uh, if nothing happens, we'll be having a Waterlight Street meeting.[1428.81]